...retiring at the end of this school year. And also Don Dougherty, the parent educator at the Buchanan K-1 Center, who has been with the district for 23 years. We have three renewals for arena advertising for 2017. One from Prostolo General Motors, one from Precision Auto Body Design, and one from Car Chiropractic Clinic. And we have one intend to apply for grant funding. That was submitted by Sherri Nelson on behalf of TAP for an Imagine Learning Online Literacy Intervention Grant from the Department of Education. As always, these can be approved with one motion. Is there any questions? Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion, second to approve. I'm just going to ask one question about the TAP grant. I just want to verify this appears to be so the TAP program can assist students with literacy during the TAP program, which is our after-school program?
Yes.
Okay. This is coming from a State Department of Education grant?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. And we now turn to celebrate successes in the district. We'll turn it over to Mr. Nivelsek.
Thank you. Several things to cover. First of all, thank you to all the board members for allowing me sick leave when we had the board meeting last time. It was better for all of you that I wasn't here, and I'm feeling much, much better. And so I appreciate that. Also want to extend condolences this evening. The reason why Board Member Bishop is not here is because of the services this evening honoring his grandmother for passing. And so I wanted to reach out and extend that as well. On the congratulations, the following groups and teams qualified for the Activities Association's Academic Achievement Team Award for collectively having combined GPAs of three points or higher. Most of our teams made that. Boys' golf, girls' cross-country, boys' cross-country, all-state chorus, all-state orchestra, football team, football cheerleaders, competitive cheer team, competitive dance, volleyball team, oral interpretation, boys' soccer, girls' soccer. Congratulations to Carissa Schroeder, volleyball all-tournament team for the state. And congratulations to teacher Lisa Kistner, one of four state finalists for the 2016 Presidential Award for Excellence in Elementary Mathematics Teaching. Those are the congratulations. To thank you, this is something that we solicit for others to send in so that we share them. Obviously, most of these came from Mrs. Foss. Thank you to all the fourth and fifth grade teachers for the outstanding job during parent-teacher conferences, which were well-attended. Thank you to Mrs. Katner and the fourth and fifth grade teachers and fourth and fifth grade students for doing an outstanding presentation honoring our veterans on Veterans Day. Thank you to the Washington fifth-grade hub members for helping all the United Way Board members sign in at the office, get their lunch in the commons, and escorting them to the correct room where the meeting was held. So those things were thank yous at the Washington Center. I also want to compliment the music program and the student musicians for the second and third grade concerts, which were last Monday and Tuesday. Our buildings and grounds crew put another step into the quality of the presentation by bringing the portable stage from the arena, setting up the portable stage, and then having the risers on top of the portable stage with all the railings up, et cetera, so that the parents could sit wherever and see the program. So as we have the new gymnasiums and figure out how to best meet the needs of the parents, that was significant. The other thing that I think was a significant improvement is they staggered the concerts. So the second, third was in November. The fourth and fifth is in December. And I believe in February is the K-1 because that keeps parents from having to go out three nights in a row or four nights in a row. And it really allowed for quality performance. All of that was engineered by principals and music people and coordinators. I'm just the recipient of watching it. And I want to compliment that I got nice feedback from parents. And I think it was really, really a nice improvement as far as people getting to see their children and the traffic flow in the building, et cetera. So thank you for that. Let's see, did I go too far off track? I think that's everything I got down. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Now turn to reports to the board. The first is the presentation of the Classified Employee of the Month. This will be presented by Mrs. Hines, the principal of the Buchanan K-1 Center.
Am I on? Okay. I'm excited to recognize Tricia as our classified employee. Tricia is just a great person. The staff wrote that she's a hard worker. She has great rapport with our students. She goes above and beyond what is asked of her. She never says no, which could be a bad thing, too. She has a positive attitude, and we are just very lucky to have her at Buchanan. So thank you and congratulations to you.
You and Kiffo is presenting at now. Where do you got it, Sherri?
I will.
Go ahead. We'll let Sherri get that. Thank you.
Thank you. The business manager's report is next, but he informs me he has no report. So move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. These are a few things that a couple I could have shared at the last meeting. We're about to put together a committee for the school calendar and just want to publicly state for those that follow the board meetings that I'll try to follow the model that we did last year in that we will announce the committee and where the committee's going to meet. And the first thing we will do at the committee is receive public testimony. So if there's anyone who wants to give public testimony, whether it's a student or whether it's a patron of the district, that we will try to announce when that committee is going to meet. And the first item of business will be to receive testimony. We did that a year ago. And I think that that was responsive to some of the requests that we've had from a couple patrons over the years. I would comment on the school calendar just from preliminary work that I believe the administrators are pretty solid behind that it's really going to continue to be an either-or. Either we continue to go after Labor Day as we have the last two or three years now, or we seriously consider the early part of the third week of August because on the high school testing schedule, we either have to move far enough up in order to be done by semester, or we should start after Labor Day so that there's three weeks before we test afterwards. And so what will predictably happen is that there will be strong, solid reasons given for both of those calendars. And then it will come down to a recommendation to come back after receiving feedback. My prediction is that the calendar, after patrons listen to it, et cetera, that we are probably going to remain at this point as an after-Labor Day would be my guess as to where we will land. But you don't have a calendar committee without listening to them and truly digesting what's gone, what goes on. There are many compelling reasons to start mid-August because of all the kids that are already here for activities. And there are strong opinions, particularly from those who do not have children in school, to being after Labor Day consistent with the state fair, et cetera. And so anyone who wants to give testimony, be prepared to do that. And we will announce when the calendar committee is going to meet. And board members, you certainly have the right as individuals to let me know your concerns or thoughts as we move forward in that process. No date has been checked off, but I just wanted to make sure you knew I'm about to start that.
I was just going to ask, do you have a general timeframe? Is this January, February?
What I like to have happen is I like to have either a late December or early January meeting so that the board has a first reading on it, has both readings on it in January. Ideally, that's what we like to do is have you all hear about the calendar at a first meeting in January and reach a consensus at the second one or send us back to work. One of those two. The other comments that I would share have to do with the legislative meeting. You'll be meeting with the legislators next Monday, December 5th at 11:30 at the Washington Center. Because all of you are there, it is a meeting that will be posted. It's a public meeting. If someone would want to attend the public meeting, they have every right to do so. Again, it's at Washington as we move from school to school so that administrators, so that legislators can get an up-close view of the students and the schools. We've been working on making sure that we did not put the legislators in any type of difficult situation with the current speculation of the ramifications of Initiated Measure 22. And so because of that, there will not be a meal involved. It will simply be a meeting that we're going to continue to have at 11:30, so it fits your lunch periods and their lunch periods. So either decide that's a day that you're going to fast or eat before or afterwards, but there will not be a meal connected in order to make sure that we have not compromised anything with Initiated Measure 22. The large school group, as I told you before, has met in the fall. And I received correspondence that we are, our next meeting will be after we hear the governor's budget. We will meet in Pier on December 15th. And next Wednesday, December 7th, is the meeting of all of the superintendents in the state. So that's when all the schools of all the sizes meet, much like the School Board Delegate Assembly. The superintendents come together for a day in Chamberlain and try to seek common ground on what can be a unified message about what is best for education. So those things are taking place. All those meetings are December meetings leading up to the January session. So that's what's going on right now. And open to questions, or that's my report.
Any questions for our superintendent? Seeing none, thank you for that report. Our one item of old business is a first reading on the after-school program handbook revisions. This is introduced at the last meeting. This is the first reading. Then we'll have a second reading at the next board meeting.
Correct.
Are there any questions or discussion regarding the handbook revisions? Seeing none, then you'll just proceed with scheduling that for a second reading in two weeks. Our one item of new business is a request for consideration of open enrollment. We will go into executive session for this, and then we'll come out of the executive session and then take action on the request. And then we do have after that a planned executive session on a different matter, after which there will not be any action. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the expulsion, suspension, discipline, assignment of, or the educational program of a student under SDCL 1-25-2, Sub 2.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion carries. We will reconvene in five minutes for executive session.
Aren't we supposed to? Well, I know that I don't go to the executive sessions. And there's two.
Well, I know that I don't go to the executive sessions and there's two.
They're either going to come out and say we approve X, Y, Z, open enrollment or we disapprove it.
No.
So, you're not getting this.
Thank you.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. I, I understand the logic.
Used to be that pride was money, not a school.
I wouldn't call it school, that's your pride.
Yeah, exactly.
But it's not that.
Oh, no, no. When, when the rules are vague, you err on the side of the call. It's just plain, proud sentence. Exactly.
Your work is done, huh? You sent me, I don't know if I put it in my phone, but you want that picture?
I, I guarantee we'll use it, but.
Yes, um, it seems like. Have you tried emailing it to your account number? Seems like I got it from you last time.
Yeah, I thought we.
Correct, I got editor.
Yep, yeah. Like I said, we can't promise it will be used, but if we don't have it, we can't, if we don't have it, we know we can't use it.
Yeah, and like you asked, I forgot I sent that to you last time.
Well, plus, I personally like to always post something positive.
Yeah.
Because if anything goes wrong, people are all over you like.
True.
You know? It's, it's like, uh, you know, a few months ago when they did the kitchen inspections and our kitchens came through all of the hundred percent of it, that's great.
Yeah.
You know?
Exactly.
Like I said, everybody complains about everything.
You gotta put the good stuff in there.
Yeah. Otherwise, we'll all go crazy. crazier.